Going to call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all forms.
We're going to move the agenda around to go to the tenure retirement recognition. We'll start with the retirees under 5.1. Upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resolution dated 5/28/19 be modified to read that the resignation of Karen Tillman Hopkins, school psychologist, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30, 2019 with regret.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. You're retired.
This is a clock. Set the alarm, first day of school.
We don't have to let you go.
She said, "I'm out of here."
Thank you.
Thank you. 5.2, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resignation of Lynn Non, reading teacher, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30, 2019 with regret.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries, you're retired too.
Now that you don't even have to set a clock.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
5.3, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resignation of Biani Garcia, special education teacher, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30, 2019 with regret.
So moved.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Biani, welcome to the club.
No, I said welcome to the club for you. No, not me. I'm not going, I'm not going there. I'll change that. Let the record reflect it's been changed.
So I'm going to call up, we've already accepted these, but I'm going to call them up, Jim Pydell and Jean Miller.
So this is what the clock looks like if anyone's interested.
Good job. Congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations, Jim.
We still have to come back to George.
These three?
George Barthel.
Usually I do this, but he doesn't.
Going to call up three more honorees. Carlos Chaz Oquendo. What's Vince going to do without you? Jeannie Jackson? Going to call up Jeannie Jackson?
Congratulations, Mr. Pydell.
We might want to mention that she's two more not here.
We now have party, geez.
And we're also going to call up George Barthel. We have two that are not here this evening, but we're definitely going to recognize them, Pam Coolman and Barbara Devaney. Congratulations.
5.4, he is not here, but we are certainly going to recognize him, upon the recommendation
of superintendent of schools be it resolved that the resignation of Norman Leo Lavendos, security attendant, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective January 1, 2020 with regret.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
We're going to invite him to next year's event.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Congratulations to Norman. Under tenure appointments, now we have those that are leaving and now we have those that are coming. Under 5.6, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that Elaine Pfeiffer Burns be who holds professional New York State certificate in the areas of technology, education, and visual arts, and who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending September 5, 2019, be granted tenure in the area of technical subjects effective September 5, 2019.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, is there a discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here for the long haul.
Congratulations.
who holds prof-
That's our principal.
That was Pa Bone, who holds professional New York State certificates in the areas of education, technology specialists, and mathematics, K-7 through 12, and who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending September 5, 2019, be granted tenure in the area of technical subjects effective September 5, 2019.
So moved.
It's been moved. Seconded. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries, congratulations, Brian. 5.8, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that Angela Urbina Medina, who holds a permanent New York State certificate in the area of school district administrator, and who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending July 7, 2019, be granted tenure in the area of deputy superintendent effective 2000, excuse me, effective July 7, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Congratulations, Angela.
We should have done this around the other way. You should go around this way.
You could go around this way.
I don't know.
Don't listen to him.
Right?
Right.
I know.
He is not here with us this- He is not here with us this evening, but we will read this, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be it resolved that John McConnell, who holds a permanent New York State certificate in the area of school district administrator, and who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending August 31, 2019, be granted tenure in the area of middle school assistant principal effective August 31, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Our congratulations to Mr. McConnell. Absolutely. Superintendent?
I really want to thank everyone for coming. You know, this is such a bittersweet event every year. We have people that are leaving that really, you know, I've been here 22 years and I really had the opportunity to not only work with the teachers retiring tonight, but really be welcomed into a family of Ellenville that really puts kids first. So I thank you all for your service of so many years and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it on behalf of the administrators. Phil take care of the board, but I know how they feel. So we're really lucky, I'm lucky, that we had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to work together with everyone that's retired. And as far as those receiving tenure tonight, you're on the journey and every journey's different. And we're very lucky to have you here and keep doing the, you know, the dedicated hard work that we see every day. I often refer to it as a marriage of, you know, for a long period of time that you have with the Ellenville School District and especially our children. And we're counting on you to, you know, to make it right every day for them. So thank you very much for the service thus far and enjoy your journey here.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly echo those sentiments. Also just want to add that I feel that we have some of the finest, I think all, finest teachers and administrators and staff members in all of the United States and perhaps all of the world. You are all a great addition to our staff and we certainly love the fact that you worked here and dedicated your lives and now go off and enjoy your retirement. And to those that are coming, the challenges that are ahead of you, but I know that you're ready for them and we certainly welcome you and we look forward to working with you. Again, congratulations to all of you. Thank you. You are certainly welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting.
Just go home and set your alarm clock.
I got to figure out a way to get to this thing.
They do not want to leave, Angela.
Are there any questions for Ms. Urbina? I would like to excuse her to go enjoy this time of her tenure with her kids. Any questions? Ms. Urbina, your excuse for the seating.
Go enjoy.
I'd like to go enjoy this time. Yeah, John's coming. Mrs. Burns, please excuse that call.
How fast can she be?
Two kids. There's car seats. There's car seats, still a few minutes.
Under 2.1, acceptance of the May 28, 2019 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening? Report a rally, do you have anything for us?
Who's laughing?
Actually, I don't think so.
No, we said doing a public forum, you're the only one here, so we wondered if you had anything for us tonight. Oh, okay. Under reports, information and correspondence. I have nothing for this evening, I'll move on to board membership and we will refer to-
Board information.
Board information.
Do you want to go through the others first?
Anybody have anything for this evening? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Hall of Fame Committee has chosen our candidates for this year. And we'll, as soon as we can get a letter out in the mail to the people that were chosen, we'll make the announcement possibly at the next board meeting and then go about getting the whole weekend set off.
Thank you. We look forward to that. Any other board members have any other concerns for this evening?
Just when will that be, John? Do you know?
When will the event be?
Yes.
I'm working with the athletic director now to set up a possible date for a homecoming football game or something. We can get to work it out. I believe the games are scheduled for Friday night, so probably one has to be moved to a Saturday afternoon to accommodate the Hall of Fame inductees, so we're still working on that, but late September, early October, I'll get a date at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members before we move on to Iris, representing the Policy Committee? Go ahead.
All right, so as you know, you have the notes in your agenda about the policy meeting that took place on June 6, and the only discussion, of course, was the senior class trip. It's policy 8416. So I would just like to give a very brief history of this policy. A number of years ago, the policy was changed, it's primarily about distance and cost, but the first change was about distance. And the reason that it was changed to 500 miles, I'm not sure everyone understands, but there were a number of incidents over a few different trips, hospitalizations, violation of code of conduct, arrests. And so it came to the attention of the board that maybe we needed to address that situation because it was difficult for parents to get to their child if they needed to, or if they chose not to go, and it was difficult to resolve the situation, sending the student home or having a parent or guardian there with them. So the reasoning on the Policy Committee at the time for setting it at 500 miles was that it was felt that a parent or guardian could travel by car within a day and make that 500 miles. So it was really to accommodate a parent or guardian if they needed to get to their child. And now that's being questioned. There are people who would like to see it unlimited, but that was the primary reason why that was changed to 500. Now, the amount of money was $500 also, I believe, until about two years ago. And what happened there was trips were coming in, and I actually have the paperwork here, but they were coming in instead of 500, they were coming in at 537, 575, and then it reached about $600. And the board requested that we increase the funding or the cost because since it was coming in over 500 anyway. So the decision was made that it should be 750. So the policy currently is 500 miles and $750. So at our meeting the other night, I mean, you can see by the notes, I don't have to read the notes to you, I'm sure you all went through this, we, there have been suggestions for 750 to keep it there, there have been suggestions for $1,000. As far as distance, 500 miles, the way it is, or unlimited. There are also other issues that we addressed at that meeting and what the Policy Committee would like to see included in the policy that isn't there now. One of the things, you know, you can see the list that the trip be all-inclusive, which would require, you could see that list, three meals a day, admission to all of the activities, that the students would be required to have individual trip insurance, and that the school needs to look at what the tour company liability insurance is in case of an emergency or any situation. The one thing that was brought up that is kind of an interesting idea, the suggestion was made that the cost per student include $20 a day stipend. So that would be collected as part of the payment for the trip, and then on the day of the trip, each student would get back that $20 a day stipend so that they would have pocket money. I know parents sometimes do, sometimes don't, and that's not our concern, but our concern is that every child be able to go on the trip with some money in their pocket. So we thought this is a way to do that. They've already paid up front for it, we're just giving it back to them on the day of their departure. And what else did we change in here? The travel dates, month seems to be the month to do this because of athletics. We have been running into problems, well, I wouldn't call it problems, we've been running into really good teams that have long seasons, and so it appears that June would be the best month to do this. As far as chaperones, we would like to see that the maximum chaperone ratio is 1 to 10. So what that would require is that an extra chaperone go along and share the same responsibilities as everyone else, but if there's an emergency and a chaperone has to go with an individual child, that the other chaperones will not have more than that 1 to 10 ratio. What else do we have here? Intervening circumstances, this is a new word for me. So intervening circumstances means basically in case of emergency. The emergencies, again, that we have been dealing with over time are violations of code of conduct, family emergencies, hospitalizations, and arrests. So when this happens, sometimes parents can't get to their child, or sometimes they choose not to get to their child, whatever the case may be. But as long as the child is on the school trip, the school- What is it? In loco-
Locoparentis.
In locoparentis. The school has absolute responsibility for that child until they are in the custody of their parent or guardian. So it was a difficult, it's a difficult situation for us to work through. So what was suggested, one of the suggestions, which actually I had forgotten to put down, but the suggestion was that the parental permission form include the names and the contact information for two people in relationship to the student, one of which would be able to travel to the student if necessary. So that might be part of the solution. Also, if parents or guardians or chaperones have to come home either before the trip is over or after, you know, before the trip is scheduled to come home or after, if they have to come home after everyone's already home, we were wondering if it wouldn't be feasible for the class who decided to take this trip and the parents who agreed to go to send their children. We were wondering if it would be feasible for the class to help in the transportation costs if a parent either has to go and get a child or a chaperone has to accompany the child, the student, home. And I think that pretty much covers all of the issues that we discussed. So we did, I did submit a survey to NAFISA to put, and I have paper copies for you, this is not a vote. We aren't, you know, we vote, if we change the policy, we vote on the policy. So this survey is not a vote. What it is, is we want to get, if we can get a clearer idea and understanding of where we're going with this, we would appreciate it. If you don't want to fill out the survey, you certainly don't have to. The Policy Committee will be meeting again on Thursday, June 20, and will have to decide whether we want to present you with a new policy, in which case it would have to be voted on, and there's a whole process for that. If it's voted down, we will stay with the policy that we have. So on that note, if anyone has some input right now, or if you'd like to include it in the survey to return to NAFISA on Monday, so we will have it for Thursday's policy meeting.
Thoughts from other board members? John?
You know, I think that this board has had a history of, in certain instances, micromanaging things, but I really don't think a Board of Education should be micromanaging. And you think about this, a month or two after many of these kids graduate, some will be going off to college, the work world, some of them will be defending our country in the military. And I think that when we put these limiting requirements in here, it kind of goes against what we're trying to do with these kids. We want to prepare these kids to go out into the world. My senior trip was to France. I didn't go. I didn't want to go to France and I didn't have the money. So I spent my money on the senior prom instead. And I just think that what the young lady said from the senior, the junior class last week about her opportunities and working hard and saving money, and it seems like this policy is more restrictive, or some of the presentations in this policy are more restrictive than the one we have now. As a parent, if I send my kid on a trip and my kid does something untoward that causes me to have to go to him or him to come home, then we own the responsibility of that. Yes, a chaperone might have to come back or whatever, but I just think we need to make this less restrictive. Give the kids the responsibility, give the kids the opportunity to do what we think they should be able to do at their age and going out into the world. And I think things like, you know, the class paying for a kid who gets in trouble, kids have to understand when they go on these trips, they represent the school, their parents, the administration, teachers that made this trip possible. And if someone gets arrested for stealing something, as has happened in the past, well, that's a life lesson, and that's part of what our job is doing here. So I'd like to see us make this less restrictive. I'd like to give the seniors and the chaperones the ability to decide where they want to go and let them go at it. And if they don't get the money to go, they don't go.
Thank you. Other board members? Be heard on this. Jody?
Okay, so I sit on the Policy Committee and I also feel the same way Mr. Burns does about, I want to give every child the opportunity to go wherever they choose within the United States at this point. The only concern I have and suggestion that I had is that we, if we change the policy for them to be able to go longer distances and the cost is going to be higher, then we should be having the classes present us with their trips at the end of their freshman year. This will give them additional time to fundraise and know the expense. The senior class that's coming, that came before us, their first payment is going to be due October or November. So when we give them a decision yes or no, those families have very limited time to start preparing. So I'd like to see that we have unlimited mileage, costs we need to, you know, really have a good discussion about because in 2000, I think it was '06 and '07 when they were going, or when they were going to Florida, it was $800. So I don't know when the cost changed from 500 or 800 or if there wasn't a limit and then we went to 500, and how long and how well we really followed those guidelines.
Janita?
I'd like to see different class trip options presented to them, so, excuse me, like Jody was saying, like Mr. Burns was saying, giving them the opportunity to go wherever they want, but also holding them accountable, so, you know, presenting the opportunity at freshman year, saying if your class is able to fundraise a certain amount by a certain time, your options increase to the distance or the places that you're able to go, which is putting incentive to the classes to work together- able to go, which is putting incentive to the classes to work together to fundraise, and also showing them that we understand, or giving you a responsibility, and if you can show us that you can be held accountable, then we can reward you with that incentive. Our seeing, like you're presenting us with an adult responsibility that you're showing you can do, and in turn, we are accepting and saying that, you know, you are closer to adulthood, and we are open to letting you make these decisions so long as we see you're able to. So I think that'd be a good option to give them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne, do you have anything? No? Anybody else want to be heard? Lisa? No? Willie?
I think the current policy is just fine as written. No changes necessary.
So I think as we, as we take a look at this, and certainly like to thank the members of the Policy Committee, your job has not been an easy one for all the policies that you've developed and brought back to this board. It's certainly been a long haul, and you guys have done a wonderful job of getting this done to us. But as we sit here and discuss this, what comes to my mind is that if there is not a majority of the board that would support the change, then we're sort of putting the cart before the horse by having the Policy Committee sit there and take a look at this. So I think what I would like to suggest is to see if there is a majority of this board that is interested in change only, not that the policy will be voted on, just to see if the board will be interested in change. Because if there is not enough support for change, there is no need for the Policy Committee to be banging their heads and trying to come up with a legitimate policy here. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So I'm going to poll the board and see if they are interested in changing the policy or leaving it as is. So it'll just be whether or not you want change.
A point of order, Mr. President. If you do it this way, and it goes down as a no, then whatever those kids and their advisors said to us last week doesn't even get voted on. And it's an easy way for us to skirt our responsibility and to just not take a vote on it. I think they deserve the right to see where we stand on this, and how can we vote on change when there's been nothing specific presented? And so when you make this type of a motion to do this, it could end it without ever having the discussion that we want to talk about. Maybe there's compromise in terms of mileage, or cost, or things like that. But to do this polling again, and then end it right now, it defeats the purpose of why we've brought this up.
Fair enough. Jody?
I'm on the Policy Committee, like I said, and we met for at least three hours the other day, and we could not come to consensus. So I think what we're looking for is, if there's a majority that want to change, then we need to go back as a policy on the 20th of June and say, this is what our board has directed us. They want to change, and this is what we need to do. So I think that's what, as a policy, we're looking for, because if the majority says they don't want to change, then we're going to go back on June 20th, and we're going to sit there again at the table and not get anything done.
Iris?
I'm interested in some of the changes that don't really have to do with the cost of the trip. Or the mileage even. I still think that there is an ongoing concern about how issues are handled when there are problems on the trip. And so I would like to go back to the Policy Committee and put something together, and see if it makes sense. And if you vote for it, fine, and if it's voted down, then we will stick with the policy that we have.
That's fair enough. That's what you have in mind, Mr. Burns?
No, no, because again, if you come back with specifics, that we don't agree with all the specifics, rather than discussing it as a board, we're going to vote on that, and that takes the compromise out of it. You're saying, here's what we came back from the Policy Committee with, and if you don't agree with this, then it's a dead issue. I think there needs to be room for compromise.
Yeah, I think, I'm actually going to ask you just to clarify that a little bit, because I'm a little bit confused on how you want to proceed with this.
Iris just said that we're going to go back to the committee, and come back with something, and vote on that. And if we vote it down, then it's dead, and if we, but what if, you know, what if you said $525?
Right.
It's either 525 or nothing. I mean, we should have the ability as a board to discuss this, and vote on something that we can come to compromise with, and give the kids more of an opportunity. I mean, they told us in their own voices, that they want this chance, and that they want the ability to go out and explore and do other things. And the things that we've talked about, kids doing something wrong, or a kid getting hurt, that could happen in Middletown if they take a trip to the movies. It could happen anywhere. What we need to do as a board, and as an administration, is make sure that we have all our bases covered if there's an untoward event. Just like we do drills on accidents, or proms, and things like that, do something within our group to make sure we have all the bases covered, that no matter what happens, we have an answer for it.
Okay. And could you just, just tell me for clarification purposes, how you foresee us coming up with that dialogue? Like, how do you, how do we get to that point?
Well, I think we need to, you know, as I said, the proposal here is more restrictive than the original policy that we have right now. And I think we need to, I'm going to be honest with you, I think that in the past, this board has found a way to say no, and we need to find a way to say yes. I mean, I think some of us were upset that it was presented to us as late as it was, some of us was upset that kids, we perceived kids to be used in this. I think that we need to find a way to say yes to kids, as long as we have all of our i's dotted and r's crossed.
Okay. So if the Policy Committee, if you charge the Policy Committee to go back to the table, and to come back to us with their ideas, not for a formal vote on one specific policy, but for them to come back to us with a template to work on, is that something that this board feels they can sit there at the table to talk about?
But, Mr. President, that's what we've done.
Willie, I can't hear you.
That's what we've done. That's what the proposal is.
Right.
Right. So in a respect, Trustee Burns is correct. We'll go back, and we'll come up with several, a variation of what's been proposed, and we're, and we're back here.
Yes.
So, and I think it's a little cleaner than that either. We make a change to the policy, or we do not. I don't know how much room there is for compromise.
Jody?
So do we need to, somebody need to make a suggestion to make it unlimited mileage and increase to, say, $850? Is that what's, to put it on the table to start a discussion, and then go from there as a board, and speak about it here? Is that how we are going to change the policy? Or, you know, and then somebody could say unlimited, or, you know, $1,000? Where do we start to come to this agreement?
I think that, I think I'm going to charge the committee to go back to the table, and to come up with some, a template for us to, for you guys to come back here for us to work with, with some different options.
Mr. President, with all due respect, the class that spoke to us last week was already over $1,000 for the trip.
That's right.
I mean, if you think about it, we talk about this, and I know every advisor that's ever advised a senior class, that's had them since the freshman year, tells them, we're going to take a senior trip, you've got a senior prom. If you want to go to those events, there's a way for you to raise money. So it's not that we just whip it on these kids at the last minute, they know this, and we've heard stories of kids that have worked their tails off to get that money, and it's rewarding to them. And there are other kids that don't work their thing, and either their parents pay for it, or they don't go. I don't understand anything fairer than that. And if they say, we want to spend $1,250 and go to California, it's their senior trip.
Iris?
I believe that one of my responsibilities as a school board trustee is to offer free and appropriate education. And in that light, I think we have some responsibility to make it possible that more students can go rather than less. So I have no magic wisdom about how much can be afforded by anybody, but I have a sense of a $1,200 trip isn't going to generate a lot of participation.
But your $500 limit has driven our numbers down in the last few years.
Well, I would argue with that, John. I would look at the numbers, and I would argue, and I would argue with that.
And the students have told us that the reason is, there's limited opportunities.
So in 2017, they went to Pennsylvania, Washington, and Virginia, and 51% of the students participated. So that's not a bad number. You know, we can argue back and forth about the data, but for me, it becomes a common sense issue. If a trip costs $1,200, there will be less students than if the trip costs $750. So what I was wondering is, if they set their trip a few years ahead of time, if they can fundraise specifically to subsidize the cost. So if they, if you have a limit of a student cost of $750, then if the class plans a trip for $900, then the class funds would have to cover that balance of that cost, and they would do it through fundraising. So they would have the opportunity to have a more expensive trip, without every student have to shelling it, having to shell out all of that money.
I'm going to call on some other board members. Geneva, and then Wayne.
So I just have a question, if that would be, because it doesn't seem like that's written into the policy now. It seems like there's a restrictive limit.
That's correct.
So would that be an option to have, like, it sounds like it would more be an expected cost trip, and if there is an option for the trip to cost more, if they can collectively fundraise as a group?
If that's what they want to do. I think it's something that really we'd have to talk to the legal counsel to make sure that we can offer them that, but I'm pretty sure in the fundraising policy, it does say that fundraising project, when they do fundraising, it has to be for specific projects. So this is another policy we have to take a look at. So they can decide they want to do fundraising specifically for their senior trip, and if the students pay $750, and they raise enough to pay the balance, they can go on the more, a more expensive trip. You know, as a class effort to raise that extra money. I think it sounds like a pretty fair proposition.
Wayne? Are you done?
So it's just sounding that there's not necessarily, like, we're getting away from there being a restrictive limit, more so as there's a restrictive expectation from the students.
Yes.
So as long as you can meet said expectation, we are willing to keep the budget open.
Yeah.
Which, don't think that's been said explicitly, so I think that's good to hear.
Good.
Wayne?
In the past, we have asked to make sure that all child has the ability to go. And we have allowed children to go on field trips that have not fundraised a bit, and have also not participated in general fundraising. So if we make a change to a $1,200 trip, then I'm going to have a very hard time with little Jimmy, who's fundraised and gone to Pancake Breakfast, and participated, and he's a couple hundred dollars short, and we give it to him, we should. But little Johnny, who hasn't gone to any of those, wants a $1,200 trip paid for free, that has to be very clear, that that's not going to happen. I think if we give the children the ability at the younger years to fundraise, then they have an obligation to do that where they can. And if they can't, at least go to the class fundraisers that go into their general fund to help offset their cost. Would be my, I would like to see that in there.
Thank you, John.
You know, the other thing is, if we talk about a building project, Vince, could we, could we plan out a building project four years in advance? Or would the cost be, and not be able to be estimated four years in advance?
Well, that's what we try to do, and we rely on the experts to tell us what the escalation costs are going to be. But oftentimes, we do miss that mark. That's what happened in the current Capitol project. The actual cost of the bids came in higher than what we had passed on the referendum, and that's why some of the work actually is being put off to the next referendum.
So we have trained professionals such as yourself that work on making those estimates, and now we're going to ask a 14-year-old ninth grader, where do you want to go in four years? I think that's a bit unreasonable.
Yeah.
Lisa Ramirez? Go.
I share Iris's concerns about participation, and I am very worried that if we make this more and more expensive each year, that participation is going to continue to drop off. I know that having the policy with a set limit, parents know going into high school that this trip is going to cost me about $750 down the line, and they can prepare. Even if we don't know where the trip is going to be, that figure is in the future for them. I'm also concerned that we are right now trying to recraft a policy that was discussed and was thought out by smart people, or at least by people who really care about kids, to fit a specific request. And I worry about recrafting policy for one specific scenario. That's it.
Well, just, just being part of the class of 2011, not having graduated that long ago, I don't think this is like a specific issue. I think this is an issue that has presented in every class since the policy has been changed. It presented in my class, and I believe I was one of the first classes that it was changed in. I was told that it hasn't come up and been presented to the board since then, and that was shocking to me, because I couldn't believe that no one else has said anything, because I know, at least in my class, that we felt something. And honestly, I'm not sure if my class had reached out, so that, you know, it makes sense that they couldn't have, but I do think it's been a consistent issue that I'm glad is being addressed, not to say that it shouldn't, you know, like, it's, the policy that's in place now has been put in place for a reason, but also the concern has, is a concern for a reason. And so I think it's not just this class issue, or an issue of today. I think it's been going on for a couple of years, so I do think it's good that we're addressing it.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Superintendent Wiles, she has to speak.
So I just have a comment. You know, I can surely understand an unlimited mileage requirement, because the cost would drive that. But when I look at $1,100 or $1,200, and I get our kids would fundraise, but I saw what the accounts were this year, and some of those students used a good portion of what they raised towards their junior class trip. So I think students, like adults, and all of us, have to choose, right? Do we want to go to the prom? Do we want to go on the class trip? You know, what are our priorities? Because that's really lifelong lessons, right? Prioritizing, seeing how we're going to spend. So I'm not sure that in the trip that was presented to us, I'm not just focusing on that, but I think maybe the classes also have the responsibility to shop their trips, like we would shop a vacation. So it's a three-night trip, it's going to Florida, you know, maybe it's, they looked at April dates, I think June dates are more realistic for us, for where we are, and when Mr. Burns said something about micromanaging, I think the principal and the administration should have a good deal of input on when this happened, so that we're not going through these machinations of dates, and changing of dates, and all of that. That being said, I think that we have to be prudent in getting proposals for trips, not we, the class, and looking at costs. And like, when we all go on vacation, or when we're doing a trip, or we're doing something through our house, we're trying to find the costs, and lower the cost as much as we can so we can afford what we want to do. So I think that that's an integral piece, you know, of this too. Now, my concern is that we come to some kind of, and we might not all have consensus, but a majority of, you know, where we want to go with this. What I've heard from the Policy Committee is if the board, you know, wants to move forward, we'll write a policy with the parameters around what the majority of the board, you know, would like to do. I think it's a very difficult topic we're talking about. I think everybody at this table, from what I've seen, wants to do what's in the best interest of all of our kids, all of them. I think Mr. Story's point about all of our kids having the opportunity to go is huge. And, you know, having those opportunities to raise the funds for everything they want to do. And one of the other things we talked about is that all of our students going into ninth grade, and the parents, know what the costs are going to be like, you know, when you hit the 11th and 12th grade, because they're significant. And we want as much participation in all those events as we can. So, you know, that's, I'm not sure that the $1,100 number can't come down a little bit if we, if we look at dates, and we look at maybe modifying some things, but that's up to the class. You know, it's their money, it's their fundraising, they get to choose. We need to set some parameters around, you know, distance. I see it as a distance and cost issue. That's how, that's what I see.
Jody?
Can we go around to say, and just ask, do you want to change distance and mileage, yes or no? Just so we know, because if we don't have a consensus here to change either one or both, then our Policy Committee on the 20th are just going to be doing the same thing we did last week, trying to come up with something we don't know where you guys want us to go.
Feelings from the board members on that? Willie?
Neither. What'd you say? Neither.
That's his vote.
No. Yeah. What's your feeling? It's not, not a vote, I'm just looking for some feelings on Jody's idea about going around, and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
John?
You know, I think in all the years I've been involved in education, any student or any athlete that has been really successful, we've told them, you set goals, you work hard, and you persevere. And we never put a cap on it. We never said, if you work hard, you can get to a 90 average, or you could win the sectionals. We always said, it's unlimited to whatever you want to do. And so I think to sit here and say, we're going back to putting a cap... And so I think to, to sit here and say, do we, we're going back to putting a cap on it that, and we talked about this briefly before the meeting, Phil, 250 or 300 a year for a kid that's busting his tail is not a lot of money to raise. I mean, if I had, if I wanted to go on that trip and you told me that that's what it would cost, I'd talk to relatives, I'd mow lawns, I'd do fundraisers, I'd do whatever I had to do to go on that trip. And the guy that didn't do that in my class doesn't deserve to go on the trip. So I'm not, I'm not amenable to sitting here and saying, you know, let's set it. And I, I don't think that maybe, you know, unlimited mileage and unlimited cost to the trip is reasonable either, but this, this board in the past has had a policy that you couldn't even do a fundraiser or you couldn't hold an event unless all kids could go. A few years back, the Booster Club did a thing with a speed camp. We had about 30 kids signed up. The district would not allow us to hold that speed camp on campus if we were to charge kids to do it. We had 30 kids, they paid $99, they had 11 sessions, they got a T-shirt, they got equipment and every single kid that went through that camp said they were much better when they got done. And they worked for it. That's what we're here for. And I'm just taken back that we want to limit this and say, no, everybody has to go and this and that. Everybody does have the ability to go on this trip. How hard do you want to work to get there?
So what I'm hearing from you is while you feel that there is, there should be, that limits are certainly not, you know, you're kind of, what I heard from you just now is that while placing an unlimited amount of mileage, unlimited amount of my money may not be the best thing, where do you think that we could reach a compromise here?
I, I think that for most of us, it would be acceptable to do the continental United States.
I think you should speak for yourself, not for most of us.
I said, most of us. I think, I said, I think most of us would agree with the continental United States. Where you want to go in that is, is open to conversation. But I, I have a trouble saying 850 when they're telling us their trip might be 1,100. I think that, again, it's their senior trip, leave it up to them.
Wayne, where do you stand on this?
I, I don't think unlimited, anything is good. I, I am okay with continental United States. I do want to see some kind of limit on the money. I don't want to see a $1,700 trip in three years from now. I, I don't want to see that. So I do want to see a limit that's reasonable for them to go to Florida if they want or for them to go to Myrtle Beach or Ohio or wherever it is that they choose to go. With that said, I do not want to see a child given from their quest $1,700 that haven't, that hasn't done a damn thing for the trip. I'm sorry, but I don't want to see that. They don't deserve it, they need to work for it, as John said.
Right.
So that's where I stand. My concern now with talking about that and looking at the numbers on the spreadsheet that we were given, and we could talk about that at a different time because it's very specific to individuals. But going forward, I am okay with a continental, as John said. Not a limited amount of money though. It has to be limited, not unlimited.
Geneva?
Reasonably.
Reasonable.
Can't be 1,700, 1,200.
I think there is room to give a compromise. I do think, I don't think unlimited means it has to be unlimited. I, I think unlimited means it could be achievable, you know, like you're, what we're saying you're allowed to work for is unlimited. Whether you attain that goal or not is up to how hard you work, but if your class collectively wants to raise $20,000 in a year and you prove that you can do that, I don't think we should tell them, you know, we presented a, a limit to how much you could do. So even though you raised $20,000, as unfeasible as that seems to us, you still have a limit. So I do think giving a tiered system would be the best option and not just based on how much money is in the account, but what percentage of that class participated in fundraising. So if 60% of the students are participating in fundraising and they're raising a certain amount of money, that's showing not just individual effort, but effort as a class, that they're, they're coming together and doing something as a class and are willing to work together as a class because they feel as a class, they want something, which means they have to work together. Like it's teaching them skills and it has an educational base to it that, you know, sometimes we tend to over, to skip over. There are adult lessons in, you know, there's something you want to work for, fine, we won't give you a limit to working for it, but we will tell you, you have to work hard enough to earn it. And I think that's important. I think like if that was presented to me, that would be something I would have talked to my classmates about doing, not just me working on an effort because I wanted to go to a specific place or me and my friends wanted to go to Florida. It would be something where I would have to present to my other classmates, I would have to present to a group of my peers and explain to them why this is worth all of us doing together, which is a lesson in and of itself that's important to learn in high school. And I think if we give them that option and we set limits not to how much money they can spend or how far they can go, but we set limits to how much they're rewarded for how hard they're working, I think that's more of the policy we need to focus on and not the actual cost or the actual distance.
For the sake of compromise on a distance, I, we do have a couple of people saying continental United States. Is that good with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa Ramirez, where do you stand on it?
Repeat the question, please. Are we talking simply distance?
Just simply distance and cost. Where do you stand on those issues?
I, I think we have a sound policy.
Okay. Jody?
Continental United States and we can talk about the cost and what parameters we want to put in that.
And I am also in favor of continental United States and discussing further the costs as well, but certainly I feel strongly on that. And I would like to say, I, I believe that kids can earn at 250. If a trip was $1,000 for, for the senior year, if it stayed like that, I'm, it's my firm belief that kids can earn that at fundrais, either through fundraising or through working or through earning it through, through working and different types of tasks or, or jobs that they have. I think, I agree when, when John says that you can go out and, you know, when you were a kid and when I was a kid, if I wanted to go on a trip, I had to earn it. I had to go out and mow the lawn, make two bucks a, a week. Back then, it was really cheap wages, so $2 went a long way. But if you really wanted something, you really want something, you have, you know, and I certainly agree with Mr. Story when he says that every kid, I do believe every kid should have the same opportunities to achieve that goal. That being said, I don't want to see us give and hand out without the person equally earning that spot, as Geneva said too. And I think that, you know, that being said, you know, I think that children have a, a unique experience knowing upfront in their freshman year, hey, I need to, and Jody's right when we talk about maybe presenting a trip, a possible trip that goes on. Obviously, the costs do increase. I agree with John in that area. They do increase. I don't know if we can say three years down the road, that same trip's going to cost $1,000. I think that would be certainly not, not wise on our parts to, to assume that three years from now, the trip's going to be $1,000. I think we have to look at a flexible amount of money in that three years for that same trip and projecting, somehow trying to project what the increase would be. That being said, I think that, you know, we, we take, and I agree with John, we're telling our children that in their, in two weeks from June, when they take their trip, they can go fight and die for their country. But we're going to limit them on what they can do and how much money they could spend two weeks before they go out into, into the world. I think we have to have more faith and, and more belief in our children and in, you know, in our advisors and in our children to be able to achieve the goals that they project. It's their trip, let them dictate with some, with some ideas that have been brought forth this evening, but let them choose it. Let them know what they're going to do. They're the ones choosing it. It's their trip, it's not our trip. So I firmly believe that they have the opportunity. I am in favor of the continental United States and discussing costs. With that being said, and there are, there is a majority for that.
Iris?
I personally would like to keep the maximum per student at 750. I think within the continental United States is fine and I really think it's a good idea if they want a trip that's more than 750 to work together as a class to raise that additional money. That's where I stand.
So then I am going, go ahead, Jody.
So what you're, what you're saying is you want the maximum expense out of a pocket for each student is 750?
Yes.
What the class puts in?
Working on a fundraiser.
On a fundraiser is where they can make up that difference.
Yes. I like the idea that they will individually have some responsibility and that they'll also be put in a position where they have to work together cooperatively for the same goal. I think that aspiring to have a common goal is very important, especially because they're going out into the world and they are going to have to deal with a lot of other people beside their small circle. So that's what I favor, 750 out of pocket, if you want to call it that limit. And the class works if you have an idea in your sophomore year, let's say. Mr. Pabon was at the meeting, we invited him to speak to us at the meeting and he felt that the students should really decide earlier than the year before, just to have an idea. And so since they go on a junior trip too, that's a whole other piece of this, but my, my thinking is that in their sophomore year, the students should research the trip with the assistance of their advisors and not the other way around. I like the idea that they would come up with more than one trip and then the class can vote on our brand new voting machines and decide. But I especially like the idea that some portion of this trip, if it's over 750 apiece, that they have to work together to make it happen. Thank you, sir.
So I am going to charge the policy committee to go back and to continue its work. You've heard from the board members, you've seen where the majority of the board stands and you've heard their ideas. So I'm going to charge the board, the policy committee to go back to work on June 20th, come back on June, on July 2nd at our reorganization meeting with something that you could present.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Thank you, everyone, really. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports to, from Superintendent Wiles.
Just a reminder, graduation is Friday, June 28th, 6:30 lineup at 6 o'clock, depending upon the weather. Hopefully, stay very positive that we'll be out on the football field and more information will follow. And just a reminder that if it is called for an indoor event, it'll be at Sullivan County Community College, same time, 6:30.
Jody has a question. Jody?
Will we be providing busing as we did last time when it was at Sullivan for any parents or family members?
We can definitely provide, you know, make it the opportunity and have a bus waiting here. I know that the last time we had buses waiting, we had four people, but that being said...
Maybe we could have a sign up?
Yeah, we, yeah. So we will look at that and I'll make sure that, you know, we have that lined up in case, in case we do end up at Sullivan, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I just want to remind the board, please look at the calendars of upcoming events. You did get an invitation tonight to the eighth grade moving up ceremony and the kindergarten celebration. We also have a fifth grade moving up during the day and there's some other events happening that are on those lists. I want to talk about the athletic banquet I attended last night. It was really a big shout out and thank you to the Booster Club for stepping in and really doing an excellent job decorating and providing a lot of support to the district, including doing the emceeing for the event. It was a great event and really big, big congratulations to all of our athletes and coaches who really do an excellent job all year round representing our school district and our community. So it was really a, a great evening. As you know, the, you have the middle school and high school yearbooks, the elementary school yearbook will be in next week and we'll make sure that you get that. Your tickets for graduation will be distributed as soon as we have them, as will your caps and gowns. So I just want to pass this to Geneva. You have to fill this out and we have one, but we want to make sure it's the correct size and, and you have it. And I'm sure everyone signed up their, you know, for their, for their gowns. If you can just let Mrs. Dory know if you'll be there, that would be great. So we have a count, so we can set up.
Iris?
I was just wondering if we aren't going to be using our tickets. Should we let Nafisa know if, you know, I don't know what you do with the extra tickets if we don't need them, but I know I'm the only one coming from my family.
Yeah, I mean, you can let Nafisa know. I know that we have board members that sometimes need some extras. I have some extras and some families do, so.
Just let Nafisa know.
You could let Nafisa know or somebody wants...
Nafisa, I'm letting you know. Thank you.
Jody?
At Sullivan, there was no limit, correct? I mean, we did have tickets, but there was no limit.
There's no limit. We did give, we did give the tickets out, but everybody was seated at Sullivan County Community College. It was nice. There'll be no limit at, at the indoor event. That's all I have to know.
Thank you. Assistant Su, oh, John?
Yes, I just want to ask, Lisa, do we have the ability to go to the NISBA convention?
Oh, that's a very good, we sure do. So the registration period opens July 15th. We have money in the budget. If you're interested in going to the event, I think it's, it's definitely the end of October.
October 24th to 26th.
Twenty, right, and it's up in Rochester. So it's two nights and if you're interested in going, please let us know and we can start putting some arrangements together. So we did build enough money in the budget for board members to go if you'd like to go during the, you know, the two days.
Thank you.
Some really good speakers and there's also a pre-law conference if you want to go up, you know, the day before.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Napoli?
Though my report is pretty short, I would like to thank our construction manager for working as hard as he did. You'll see that there's seven resolutions closing out the Capitol Project. There's some change orders, there's some final payments, so I'd just like to say thanks for all the hard work that, that our team put into getting this project closed out.
Thank you. Jody?
The senior, I guess it's the cost that we've talked about before and I saw that has to...
The senior age exemption?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That has to be put up for our vote. Is that, did I read that correctly?
So two things need to happen, which it'll happen soon. There needs to be a public hearing.
Okay.
So, and that's just a matter of formality. And then the board would then vote to change the, the age senior exemption from, what is it, 24.5 or 25.5 to, to the maximum of $29,000.
Okay, so we are looking in where that is going to move forward.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Probably, hopefully have a public hearing the, the night of the, if we can, the night of the reorg in between.
July 2nd.
Do that and then have the vote.
Thank you. Okay, under personnel resolutions that we missed, 5.5, upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools be resolved with the resignation of Kimberly Richter, reading teacher be accepted effective June 5th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one? Motion carries. Under 5.10, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Nicholas Streeter be appointed substitute teacher aid at a rate of $82 per day work, substitute cafeteria monitor at a rate of $11.50 per hour work, clerical substitute at a rate of $95 per day work, uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of $95 per day work for the 18, 19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one? Motion carries. Upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Cherish Barry's appointment as a long-term substitute be extended until January 1st, 2020 or to the return of the teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one? Motion carries. 5.12, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Tim Lukaszewski be approved to work 20 hours per week, not to exceed 200 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work for the summer of 2019, effective Jan, July 1st, 2019 through August 30th, 2019, same as last year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one? Motion carries. 5.13, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Mark...
Disarm.
Disarmi, who holds an initial New York State certificate in the area of social studies...
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries. 5.14, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that Dr. James V. Fogarty be appointed as special education consultant at a rate of 750 per day work, not to exceed 20 days per month, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries. 5.15, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be resolved that Joseph Logan be appointed maintenance coordinator at a contractual stipend of $7,776, effective July 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Has been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Oh, discussion, sorry. Discussion. Wayne?
Did we take that position out of the budget for the, the administrative person at night to help out with, I don't remember the name of the position?
So, we, right now, the position is still on the books. At the time that we hire a director, superintendent of buildings and grounds, then the discussion was, we wouldn't have the coordinating position. But right now, the list is not together from civil service. Vince is in the process of working with Sullivan County Civil Service to get a list, to pull that, and then, at the time that that's created, this position would be abolished.
So, will it be prorated, then, for the...
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
Question, do we know when that list is coming out?
I don't, I, I asked for the list at the end of last week. So, what they did was, 710 people took the statewide test that gets offered every five years, and then what Sullivan County did was they canvassed all 710, so that every district in Sullivan County that was looking for a facilities director didn't have to canvas all 700 people. So, they narrowed down the list. There, I don't know what their process is to collecting all of the respondents, and then what'll happen is, once that list is complete, then we will then canvass everyone on that list to see if they're interested in working in Ellenville, and then we will then interview from there. Did that answer the question?
And, and just so you know, this isn't our process, this is civil services process. So, we're waiting for a bona fide list from civil service.
We, I thought our goal was to have that for the next school year. Do you think we'll meet that?
We will, we will not have one for July 1. We will have it in 1920. I'm hoping sometime by beginning of school, September, October, we'll have somebody on board, but it, it takes time. We're waiting on civil service to, to get that list.
So, the 1920 school year, we won't have anybody till the, the, the 2021?
No, hopefully, we'll have someone during the, during 1920, just not July 1st.
Anybody else want to be heard on this? If not, all those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries. 5.16, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that Lisa Dwyer be appointed as a part-time psychologist, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, at a contractual rate of 71, 78 per hour work, not to exceed 30 hours per week.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries. 5.17, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the CSE...
Motion to move the list for CSE, CPSE committee as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. 5.18, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the attached list of teachers be approved to participate in the summer CSE, CPSE meetings, conduct testing is needed at their contractual rate for the period July 1, 2019 through August 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, no one. Motion carries. Abstained, sorry. Under 5.19, summer professional development. Upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the attached list of individuals be approved to participate in the summer professional development session at the rate indicated.
So moved.
Cherish Berry is appointed.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
Wait, what are we doing here?
Has been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed?
You didn't give me a chance to have discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, I, I think I agree with what you brought up before, that I would like to see the board have more access to some of the things that are coming in as professional development, before we actually have to vote on them.
So, we have to vote again?
Yeah, we're going to have to vote again, after. Any more discussion on this issue? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. 5.20, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that Frank Mulhern be appointed as an administrative substitute at a rate of $75 per hour work, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries. 5.21, upon the recommendation, superintendent of schools, be it resolved that the appointment of Ebony Nettles, security attendant, be made permanent, following successfully probationary period of six months, effective June 12th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries unanimous. There is no policy resolutions. Move on to education resolution, 7.1, resolve the attached list of IASPs.
Move the rest.
Second.
Being moved and seconded. There are 17. Discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries unanimous. Under eight.
Motion to move 8187.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, move 8.1 through 8.7. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries unanimous. Under other.
Motion to move 91 to 915.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, to move 9.1 through 9.15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries unanimous. The next meeting is June 25th, and then the next regular meeting is July 2nd. That's our reorganization meeting. It is a construction meeting on June 25th.
Can I just ask a question? I'm, I'm, would like to ask the board if they would go back to 5, I'm sorry about this, I just caught something. 5.11 on long-term substitutes, that date says January 1st. I believe it should be January 31st, to the end of the first semester. I think it's a typo.
Motion to amend 5.11.
Thank you.
There's a motion to amend 5.11. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, no one. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Again, the next, the workshop for the construction will be June 25th. Mark your calendars.
Where will it be?
And it will be in here. And then July 2nd is our reorg meeting. Anybody have anything for the next regular scheduled meeting to be on the agenda?
I actually have a question.
Yes.
Are we doing a Fourth of July float this year?
We are. We'll have more information. We're getting it all together, but my understanding is we're having it, and the board is always invited to ride the float.
Anybody else have anything for the next, Mr. Burns?
Lisa, over the past couple of meetings, I've asked for a comprehensive report on student absenteeism, and as you know, we've gotten some administrators that have sent in excused absences, unexcused absences. I think that some of the board members share a concern that our numbers might be higher under the state definition of chronic absenteeism than we've established, and I think it's important that we take a look at that and continue conversation on ways to improve the absentee rate.
I think that, that is one of the, the topics that we'll be reviewing with the administrators at the workshop in the fall. This is an ongoing agenda item at our administrators' meetings. We have some new software in place that we're really getting up and running, that we want to share with the board. So, your point is well-taken, and I know we haven't gotten that report to you, but we're, we're really trying to wind down and then really get the right data. And we talked about taking that portion of the report, the management report that you get monthly, and really having it consistent by the three buildings, so that the data means something.
It also suggested that, perchance, we work collaboratively between the board, the administration, and the union in coming up with a common letter to the Commissioner of Education, asking for more ways that we could have a little bit of authority over that. Right now, we're very limited in affecting kids' absenteeism.
And there's some new case law. I did go back to the attorneys and ask about course credit and attendance, and there's some change, minor change, but we should still look at it. That'll be part of the comprehensive attendance policy. That's definitely one of the three or four policies that's left to go through, and that's something that we will definitely be discussing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for something on the next agenda, July 2nd? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Oppose, no one. We're adjourned.